Good afternoon. I call to order Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 14th, 2017. The first order of business is the approval of both the April 12th and April 26th, 2017 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to these? We have a motion to approve? Second? Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Thank you. And thank you, Robin, as always, for tackling those.
You're welcome.
The next order of business is the following public hearing item. The petition of Workman Oil for a conditional use permit to allow fill within the floodplain at 4012 and 4014 Ward's Road to allow the construction of a retail and restaurant space with a drive-through.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission. My name's Dylan Bishop, and I'll be filling in for Ann while she's out on maternity leave. So this petition for a conditional use permit is to allow fill in the floodplain to facilitate a drive-through lane for a new retail and restaurant building. The subject property includes these two tracts totaling 1.587 acres located at 4012 and 4014 Ward's Road, and the property is currently vacant. Rock Castle Creek runs along the rear of the property, and the site's mostly flat with a slight downward slope towards the creek. The properties are zoned B5 general business with a resource conservation district at the rear. The future land use map recommends community, commercial, and resource conservation land uses for the area. The comprehensive plan states that the city should limit development within the 100-year floodplain. However, the proposed fill would facilitate the redevelopment of an already developed In dark blue outline here is the current 100-year flood limit, and this light blue limit here is the proposed 100-year flood limit. So this orange patch here is where the grading will occur, and to the left of this dark green line is the current resource conservation area, and to the left of this light green line here is the future resource conservation area. The proposed fill will occur in both the currently zoned resource conservation district as well as the future land use conservation area. However, it is important to note that the development itself will be outside of both of these areas. The no-rise study submitted by the petitioner indicates that there will be no net rise in the 100-year flood levels, and this is because they will be able to mitigate the effects of the fill with additional cut. Once construction is complete, the graded area will be stabilized and will result in a reduction in impervious area from 13,200 feet to 7,000 square feet. Water quantity measures will most likely not be required as the site discharges to Rock Castle Creek, which has a drainage area of over 100 times the site, and water quality will be addressed through the purchase of non-point source nutrient credits. TRC reviewed the request for a conditional use permit on May 23rd. Site plan comments will be addressed in the final stages, and the retail and restaurant building will be developed in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Planning Division recommends approval of this petition, and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Great. Thank you, Dylan, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? Come forward, sign in, state your name, and we'll be happy to hear from you.
Well, I know you probably won't go 10 minutes, but I'm gonna have the timer on you for 10 minutes. I doubt you're good. I doubt you're good, though.
You can play it about two minutes if you like.
All right. There's no minimum time required, so... Thank you, Robin.
I'll take one of those minutes to sign.
I'm not even gonna start it till you're done signing it. I'll be fair.
Okay. Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Bill Berkeley. I'm with Berkeley Howell &amp; Associates. We're here representing the petitioners on this project. I have with me Ty Mosby, who's also in my office, and Mr. Warner Hall, who's with Workman Oil. So if we have any questions that are outside of the technical area, Warner will be happy to answer those, I think. I don't know that there's a lot I can add to what's already been said. This was a site of an old convenience store. The convenience store's been torn down. There was an old storage building that was down there in the conservation area that has been torn down as well, and what we're proposing is a little small commercial center there that will serve a drive-through restaurant and some additional retail space. Of course, what we're talking about here today, the conditional use permit, is simply needed to put the fill in the floodplain. The actual development is all by right development there. We've had a floodplain study that shows that there'll be no rise or no change to the flood zone, to the height of the water in the flood zone when this project is completed, and actually we will be considerably reducing the amount of impervious areas, as was stated. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you all may have, but that's about all that we really have at this point in time.
Great. Thank you. We may call you back up in a few minutes.
Okay.
Is there anyone here from the public to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? All right. At this point, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Berkeley, you can come back up. We may have some questions for you. Questions for the petitioner or planning staff?
Just a point. You brought up that there's... that any runoff would be handled through conservation credits or what do you call them? Nutrient credits?
Nutrient credits.
What's... I mean, what... Can you just explain 25 words or less what's going on there?
I'll give it my best shot. Stormwater management, since the change in... Well, stormwater management in the state of Virginia requires two aspects. There's water quantity, the amount of runoff, and then there's water quality, which is the nutrient capability or the nutrient composition of that runoff and basically cleaning up the water. And there are two ways to address water quality. You can put onsite facilities there, onsite mechanical equipment, or onsite biological facilities that clean up the water on the site itself, or you can buy nutrient credits in a credit bank that's somewhere offsite. The nutrient credits have a couple of advantages. Number one, they're usually less expensive than the facilities that you would put onsite, and you get a two pounds for one pound advantage when you go to the nutrient credit banks. There's a nutrient credit bank somewhere in the watershed that is cleaning up two pounds... phosphorus is the indicator nutrient that they use to measure this by. So there's two pounds of phosphorus being taken out at the credit bank for every one pound that you would have to take out on the site. So it's basically just an effort to clean up the water as well as control the quantity. Now, on this particular site, as was previously mentioned, because we discharged to Rock Castle Creek and we are way less than 100 times... 100 percent... 1 percent of the drainage area, we probably won't have to do any quantity.
That's what... That's kind of what I was going with was... Because you're... Not only that, but I wanted to pick up on your comment about the fact you're putting dirt in there, so you've actually got a greater surface area to absorb the water. Is that correct?
Right. Yes, and we're... That lower area there now is basically a gravel parking lot. It served that old building that was there. We're taking up a big portion of that. I think she said from 13,000 to 7,000, so that's that much more green space that will be there.
All right. Thank you.
So the credits coming from within the watershed, how is the watershed defined? Are you talking Rock Castle Creek or the James River? In other words, do you have an idea of where this banking would come from? We know it's not going to be onsite.
It will be in the... It'll be the James River watershed.
So it could be Richmond?
It could be in Amelia Canyon. Do you know where the bank is?
No, there's different banks.
No, I'm just... But I'm just trying to get a feel for the scope.
I think the last one we bought credits in was the actual bank is in Appomattox County, but yeah, it can be anywhere in the James River.
So in my three years and more on Planning Commission, we've never looked at banking as an option to offset onsite impacts, and I'm just interested from planning staff their thoughts on that.
It's state all that they're allowed to do it, so we really don't have a choice in the matter. The stormwater laws allow them to buy onsite nutrient credits.
When you buy the credits, do you pay every year?
Oh, yeah, so one-time purchase.
Wow, okay.
I've got a couple of questions. The fill, since the development isn't taking place there, is it just because you don't want to move the dirt somewhere else?
No. In order to put the drive-through and get it to function going around the building, we need to take that out, level behind where the building used to be.
Need to have an offset or a buffer beyond that.
Right, yeah. The top of the fill... The top of the fill that's there now is kind of runs through the... You can see those light dash lines running through those two buildings. That's where the top of the fill is now, and we're pushing that fill out to where the edge of the drive-through is and then carrying it down.
And I had a question for Dylan. I'm confused because everything in the petition we saw, I just mentioned the CUP, but you're discussing changing the extent of the resource conservation boundaries.
No, the conservation areas aren't gonna change. It's just the development is gonna occur outside of it. The thing that's changing will be the floodplain or the floodway.
Okay.
So it's just moving down here.
You're moving it out, grading it so that it's flat farther out?
Yes.
And then are you... And you're cutting that oval area up to the left. Are you just making that deeper than it is now?
We're just flattening it out, so there's a hump in there and that.
Oh, okay.
We're just flattening it out so the water can spread out.
Okay, so you're not cutting down.
And so it won't back up any water. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it.
I mean, my general thoughts is we tend to look at this piecemeal, and if you consider the history of this area, this will be the... If approved, the fourth CUP to fill in the floodplain in recent history, and there was also a loss of resource conservation land as well during one of those previous CUPs. And I think we sometimes tend to ignore the history and the cumulative impact of that. In general, filling in the floodplain, I think, is a very serious matter. In this case, when you look at the site and the overall before and after, I do think it's gonna be better off, and in some ways, I think it's gonna be even, as has been indicated, I agree, less of an impact on what's happening downstream. I mean, that site's a mess right now, and anytime we can improve a site, I think, is a good thing. But I do think we need to be aware of these cumulative impacts of filling in the floodplains and the fact that we keep doing it over and over and over, and we often ignore that. Having said that, I do think it's overall a worthwhile project, and it's one that I would support.
I think it's good that you have this vacant spot. Someone's gonna do something. We're gonna address this matter now, next year, two years from now. Someone's gonna do something with that lot, and so we may as well tackle it now, and I think we've addressed the resource conservation, the water issues there. I was unaware about the credit banks or whatever, but I'm in favor of it.
Well, do we have a motion?
Do you make a motion to approve the petition as submitted?
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. We are recommending approval to council.
Thank you, gentlemen.
As good luck as you take your case.
Ladies, I appreciate it.
Good luck with the project that's approved.
So your daughter, the other day, could be a better dad.
All right. Our second public hearing is... Item is the petition of Hotel Acquisitions 3 TPS LLC to rezone approximately 1 in 5600ths acres from I-3 heavy industrial district to B5 general business district to allow the construction of a mixed-use building containing a hotel and apartment unit at 464 Murray Place.
Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission, the subject property is currently zoned I-3 heavy industrial district, and it's recommended for employment to uses on the city's future land use map. These areas are intended for light and heavy manufacturing, research and development, or large-scale office uses. However, restaurant and hotel-type uses that are designed to support the employment area are also appropriate. The property currently contains a little over a 14,000-square-foot metal building that was constructed in 1969. The building would be demolished as part of this proposal. If the rezoning is approved, the property would be redeveloped as a seven-story building including 101 apartment... I'm sorry, 101 hotel units, 22 apartment units, and a pool and associated parking. And this is just some different renderings that have been submitted of the facility. The submitted concept plan does indicate a total of 123 parking spaces, which is slightly lower than what the required parking would be under the zoning ordinance. However, the zoning ordinance does provide for a parking reduction if the site is within 1,000 linear feet of a bus stop, which the site is within 900 feet of a GLTC route on Cantler's Mountain Road. Traffic study was not required by the city traffic engineer. Stormwater management would be addressed by the use of underground detention with discharging to the eastern part of the site into a channel. This proposed use would redevelop an otherwise underutilized piece of property. It is consistent with the city's future land use map and plan. It is in close proximity to uses that it could support, such as River Ridge Mall, Liberty University, and industrial uses within that area. And with that, the planning staff does recommend approval of the rezon.
Thank you. Who is here to speak in favor of this petition? Come forward and sign in, please, and state your name, and as Robin indicated earlier, we do have a countdown clock going.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. My name is John Wright. I'm with Bowler Engineering out of Warrenton, Virginia, and I represent the petitioner, Richard Pietrafessa, with Hotel Acquisitions 3 TPS. And I also have other members of our team here. We have John Baralani with Delpost Architecture. He's a project architect. And I also have Ryan Yager, who's with the design team with my firm. So as much as was said before, obviously, our client is looking to rezone this property from an industrial use to a B5 to accommodate the proposed uses you see in front of you. That will consist of 101 hotel rooms and 22 apartment units. And with that, I think a lot was said by Tom. I appreciate the introduction, and if you have any questions, we can definitely answer those for you.
Thank you. We may call you back up in a few minutes. Hope you guys are enjoying our city while you're visiting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? All right. At this point, the public hearing is closed. Questions? Commissioners for planning or the petitioner?
I have one question for Tom. Why was the traffic study not required? Not enough traffic?
I think because of its location. I'm sure... Is there a light at... Is there a light at that intersection? I can't...
James T. Davis at the mall.
Yeah.
Yeah, across from the mall. There were some straight factors, but I would like just to stop sign.
Yeah, I'm not 100 percent sure why they didn't... For some reason, they didn't feel like it rose to the level of needing one.
When you say "they," that's our folks or the petitioners?
That's our city engineers.
And it might be that, you know, the offset in what the traffic would be generated by this development composed of what could be developed industrially would be a wash.
I had a question, Mr. Wright. If you could come back. This is almost a cosmetic question, but the distinction between the hotel rooms and the apartments, is it facilities inside size? I'm assuming the apartments have more of a kitchen complex and...
Yeah, it's based on size, and I can call up John Baralani if you want to speak a little bit to the residential layout component.
Sure. Sign in here.
Thank you.
Okay. If you could repeat your question, I just want to make sure I understood.
Just the distinction between the hotel units and the apartment units and what your... The apartments, the capacity of those?
So we have per floor. Right now, we have two floors of apartments. There's about 11 apartments, as we've got it laid out right now, per floor. So there's... They range between the smallest is probably around 700 square feet, 650, and the largest is in the 1,200, 1,300. We are kind of working those back and forth, but those would be the range of the apartments, and there'd be one bedrooms and two bedrooms, most likely, in the distinction. Yep?
One of the concerns we often get with apartments is students, college students, jamming in as many folks as possible. And as a college professor, I'm not against that because that pays my salary, but it is a concern that arises quite a bit in our city.
Sure, sure.
So I'm not...
I mean, the market that we're really... And I can defer to the owner if he wants to add anything, but the market we're really looking for is more of the professional. Hopefully, the college professors, the people that are coming to the college, that are working with the college. We want these to be nicer apartments. They're on the sixth and seventh floor. They're gonna have spectacular views, so it's not a lower-end apartment. That's not what our target market's for.
Are they short-term rentals, the apartments? What's your intention for those?
Well, they would be a year lease.
A year lease?
Yes, and I could defer to the owner just to make sure.
Yes, that's correct. As John said, our target for this is someone who... Our young professionals or empty nesters who want an easier lifestyle to turn a key and leave, but still like the amenities associated with the hotel and the convenience of having things like a cleaning service available.
Thanks.
I do think there is a concern with the parking situation, the fact that you're allowed to concede some spots because you're near a bus stop. My guess is most of the clients coming to this hotel would not be riding the city buses. Most would be driving in, and even those flying or taking the train would probably be using a taxi or some other form of driving. So it's fine. That's the regulation, but I would hate to see it be where there's just no parking off street because it's filled to capacity. But again, that's out of our purview here because it satisfies the city's regulation.
I'm surprised, too, you have only six employees per shift, I think I read. Is that right?
That is... That's correct, yep. It may fluctuate back and forth, you know, depending on the load and the times, but on average, no.
So Tom, the last petition separated water quality from water quantity. That was because it was filling on a floodplain?
I think we were just pointing out that that's how they were addressing their offsite water quality requirements. I'm not... I don't think... I'm not sure. You can correct me if I'm wrong, that they've gotten as far to determine how they're going to address water quality yet. The quantity is going to be done with underground detention. If they so desire, the way the state law is written, is they could also purchase onsite nutrient credits to deal with the water quality. Doesn't mean I agree with the concept, but that's what state law...
So quality falls under the jurisdiction of the INS plan?
Correct.
Yeah.
Stormwater erosion stuff.
And the last petitioner's just more ahead of it with presenting that to us?
Correct.
Thoughts or other questions?
One, looking at the picture, I'm very pleased with the picture of the hotel. It looks very large. I'm perplexed as to how it's gonna fit in that area with all the associated parking that baffles me. I see a problem with the parking's gonna develop invariably. The additional traffic right there at Murray Place, you can't take that... Go down to La Quinta, right turn only. That's not a problem. Exiting, if you want to go... Want to take a left, you gotta go down at the light, and we've got traffic right there, and that is one of the worst intersections in the state of Virginia, at least it was 10 years ago by Department of Transportation. But looking at the buildings there, we need to do something. I mean, it definitely will generate income for the city in terms of taxes and bring additional people into the retail restaurants that we have in the area. So I think it's gonna be a good win for the city, understanding that will not affect the Lynchburg warehouse down below. Is that correct? So those people on the sixth and seventh floor will have a wonderful view of Lynchburg warehouse operations. And also the trains.
Lower end.
Yeah.
Oh, the lower price department.
Hey, but 6/11 comes through again, they'll be right up high and seeing it. So by and large, I think, you know, it's gonna do something with the property. Right now, I don't think we're... City's gaining anything for having that building there. Definitely not making money off in terms of taxes. I think this will be something good for the city, bringing in more people, revenue and everything, even though I think this will be number... Hotel number 17 or 18 in this area of town, not that I went out and counted them. So yes, I'm in favor, Robin.
Yeah, I think if you look at the before and after, there's no doubt it's an improvement.
Yeah.
And I think the zoning is an improvement, or the requested zoning. I think it better fits the area, and even with some of the industry going on nearby, I think it's a better fit overall, and I think the idea of having apartments as part of the hotel is neat, and I'm not sure any of our other hotels... We have long-term hotels, but that's different. Extended stay hotels, but that's different. I think that's a neat idea. So I... Again, I think the overall impact is an improvement.
Any other comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I reckon I can make the motion that we approve this proposal.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. We are recommending an approval to city council, so you guys... You gentlemen get to visit us again when they convene, so thank you very much. Good luck with your project if it's approved.
Thank you.
Any other business, new or old, that we need to discuss?
We don't really need to discuss it, but I'll just go ahead and let you know that it's coming at your next meeting. Well, yesterday evening, council directed staff to look at amending the sidewalk requirements in the zoning ordinance to provide a little bit more flexibility and when they're required. So we'll be giving you a presentation on what the issues are, asking for your input, taking that input back, getting input from other city staff, drafting that, and bringing that forward for you. Also, we are obviously getting ready to kick off the downtown master plan and Tyree Anna Plan update. We'll be having meetings with staff starting in July, and then there'll be public meetings in August that we will...
We would definitely like to have your input and...
And I think you're bringing in an outside group to help with that.
Yes, we brought in Hill Studio, Rowan Oak, and some other firms to help with transportation, planning, and economic analysis.
Well, it's good timing as we start kicking off the Main Street Bridge replacement.
And that's when we're gonna get into the two-way traffic on Main Street, correct?
We will be discussing transportation management downtown.
Just a reminder, as we go, continue hunting in the summer, people have been good about letting Robin know about vacation plans so that we know ahead of time.
Yeah, people have been doing very well, Jeff, so thank you very much.
And anything else?
Rachel, do you wanna introduce your intern?
Oh, sure. This is Lauren Higginson. She's spending time with us this summer, learning about planning. She's a rising senior at Lynchburg College and a student at Dr. Peralta, so we, he turned her on to planning commission and...
The lady's like our girl in the back just watching.
Great. Well, welcome, and I hope your internship goes well.
It's going very well.
All right.
I'd like to acknowledge our two sisters that came here and joined us. I had no idea what your names are, but I'm really tickled that you all showed up to see what we do here.
We're kinda tickled ourselves. I'm at Purcell Insurance, Conway, and we've just recently purchased the ideal warehouse building next to the credit area.
Okay.
And just kind of getting our feet wet in terms of the process as we go forward in trying to develop a program for that particular building.
Great. Well, that's, that's good to hear, and I'm sure you'll find our planning staff is incredibly helpful.
All right.
If you've seen the downtown, you know there's a big push towards doing what we can to revitalize it, so.
Great.
Welcome, welcome to that project. Glad you guys came.
Thank you. Please come again.
All right.
All right. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So do.
Second? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.